Big agenda, so let's get this show on the road. We'll start with the introduction of the planning commissioners. Go ahead, Donna, you're first up.
Don Dehand, District One.
Eric Casino, District Two.
Donna?
Donna Nickerson, District Three.
Scott?
Scott Nelson, District Three.
So, Raoul?
Raoul DeLion, District One.
Okay, Ed, could you introduce yourself, please?
Ed Fleischer, District Two.
And I'm Jim Simmons, District Three. Again, just, we've got a big agenda, so let's try to keep moving as best we can. So, I'm looking for an approval of the agenda.
Yep.
Move, second.
Second, Raoul?
All those in favor say aye. Signify.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, and next will be the approval of the meeting minutes on, from April 7th, 2021.
Move to approve.
Ed, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approval of the meeting minutes for April 7th? Signify.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're moving on to public communications. Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak? If so, please, I have one. You'll have three minutes. Paulie will put up a timer if you're new. Some, most of you probably already understand this. The timer will go from green to yellow, which signifies you have about 30 seconds left, to red. And at that point, we're asking you to wrap it up. So, the first one on the list that has raised your hand is Loretta. And I don't see your full last name, so I apologize for that. Oops. Can you, oh, sorry, Loretta, sorry, sorry.
Okay.
There you go, oops.
I think I'm unmuted now, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you, I am Loretta Seppinen, resident of Olympia, Washington. I was given the opportunity to be one of the community members on the Buildable Lands Project report that you will have the staff share with you this evening. And I want to call your attention to one part of that report. And I want to express my appreciation for the good work that the staff of the Thurston Regional Planning Council did in putting this very complex set of information together. I learned how complex it was by sitting as a, as a community member on that work. And also to the, like, your staff member and the staff of other jurisdictions who commented on the report as well. I want to call your attention to the second goal from the Sustainable Thurston, which will be in the report, and they'll share that with you. And that's about our goal to keep population growth out of the rural areas and in the urban areas. You'll see information that will show you that we're failing at making progress on that goal. And in the report, amongst the many other ideas, there are three recommendations that have to do with that particular issue. And I do want you to, to pay attention to that. You've asked for the commissioners, the staff, to work on an egg policy and program analysis, and they're doing that right now. And when that comes back to you, those recommendations that will be made will be pretty critical if we're going to be able to work against what will naturally happen unless we make some policy and program changes. So I call your special attention to the Sustainable Thurston Goal Number Two as you go through the review of that report. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, I have Josh Stotler.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead, Josh.
Great. Good evening, commissioners. If you have reviewed the draft wireless code, you know that it's written almost entirely to the benefit of wireless companies. This was done under the belief that it's necessary to comply with FCC rules for small cell sites. What you're probably not aware of is that on August, in August of 2019, a court decision in Kewa at Al versus the FCC, they vacated the FCC Order 18-30, thereby reinstating prior regulations requiring environmental and historic preservation reviews of small cell sites. Your draft code is currently incompatible with this ruling. Also, in October of 2019, in Mozilla versus the FCC, the courts vacated parts of the 2018 Restoring Internet Freedom Order, specifically vacating the FCC's preemptive directive. That means local rules and timelines, whatever they may be, take precedence over FCC guidelines, as long as they comply with the 1996 Telecommunications Act, which your previous code was written to comply with. Knowing this, why was the old code scrapped and nothing from it brought forward? And why is the new code written to comply with many rules that have now been vacated? What's more, this new code is written, for the most part, as a set of rules the county must comply with, not as a set of rules the applicant must comply with. It's completely backwards. The building code, for example, doesn't tell the county what it has to do, it tells builders what they need to do. It requires proof of good and safe design, notice when they're affecting neighbors, proof of compliance with state and federal rules, inspections, et cetera. The draft wireless code does virtually none of that. It doesn't even require all the things the FCC says it needs to be required from applicants and operators by law. It's a simple fact, the draft code would open the county up to lawsuits. What's missing? The draft code allows placements of towers and antennas immediately in front of homes and businesses every 600 feet, less if they replace or mount on an existing structure, without any notice to citizens or residents or property owners in the effective range. There's no comment period for new towers or antennas. There's no process to challenge the location of the tower, even if it's in your front yard blocking your view. There's no NEPA or environmental assessments, which are all required by state and federal law for nearly all small cell sites. There's no proof of, required of a coverage gap showing that an antenna or tower is actually needed in a particular location. There's no wattage limits or radiated power limits, which you have every right to set. There's no check to see if wattages are within legal limits. The FCC doesn't check this, they assume localities will, but it's not in our code. No proof that, there's, doesn't require proof that they have a license for the tower from the FCC, and that's just basic. No exceptions to time limits or so-called shot clocks, which were vacated over, for, overreach, now just suggestions, but they're in the draft code. There's no list of best or worst prioritized tower locations, no requirements for pollution insurance or insurance of any kind. The list goes on. And yes, these are all allowed under the FCC rules. I could cover 10 pages just summarizing all the elements that are missing.
Josh, I'm gonna need you to wrap it up.
Okay, you guys have the power here. Direct your staff to go back to the drawing board. Direct them to form a citizens' working group. Direct them to bring in a qualified consultant, such as Andrew Campanelli, and that can properly direct you about the code. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thanks, sir. Looks like I have Kristi?
You do, commissioners, can you hear me?
Yep, you're good.
Great, thank you. Kristi White, who lives here in the Delphi Valley. And I guess I'll start off, my comments tonight are also about wireless code. I guess from Josh's previous presentation, I'll start with ditto. There's, there's quite a bit that can, still needs to be done on the wireless code. The request I have specifically is that we do not set a public hearing on June 2nd. There's so much more work that needs to be done on this code. The code has, the review for the, has been on the docket since 2014. This new code is not just a few changes. It is a complete overhaul to a code that's been effectively in place for 20 years. The, the previous code, the current code, is detailed, specific, and reasonable to both the wireless companies and Thurston County citizens. The current code has supported growth and protected us. To reference a perspective, the Shoreline Master Plan does not impact every citizen in the county, yet it has had the diligence of the staff, input from citizens, and extensive discussion by all of you. I think the wireless code changes, which impact every person in the county, deserve that level of diligence and look. We've got time to do that. There's 76 comments out there that have come through on the wireless code. So it is a topic that many people in the county are very concerned about. And again, it's finding that balance. It doesn't have to be one extreme or the other, and I think we can do that. And I think there's citizens and other attorneys that can help take what's been written and add to it and balance it out. This new code is gonna be out there for years yet to come. It, it really deserves that level of diligence. So again, I ask that the public hearing not be set yet. As Josh said earlier, let's go back to the drawing board and, and really put some time and diligence in it to make a win-win for everybody in the county. Thanks for listening to me tonight.
Thanks, Kristi. I have Stephen Zimmerman. Looks like you done, unmute yourself, Steve, we have Gaia. Hang on. Well, I'm not, are you there, Steve? I'm not getting you. Steve, I'm gonna get back to you. Let's try this, try Meridie Papst.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Meridie Papst, and I'm from Wireless Policy Group and representing AT&amp;T. About two weeks ago, we prepared a red line of suggested changes for the wireless policy, or excuse me, the wireless ordinance you'll be considering tonight in work session. And we sent those detailed comments, questions, and suggestions to Caitlin Nelson and Mr. Feldman for his consideration. For your consideration tonight, I just wanted to highlight a couple of policy issues related to the wireless code change. One is the AT&amp;T suggests that the county reconsider the zones in which wireless uses are permitted. And this is from Table 20.54. And looking at the table, I found a number of zones where wireless is completely prohibited, where other jurisdictions allow wireless uses. One example is highway commercial, which is often considered to be a very high-intensity zone where communities encourage wireless facilities. A couple other examples where other jurisdictions allow wireless facilities is in public parks zoning and in forest zoning. And in both of those instances, typically, there's a good setting with mature trees and vegetation. A carrier might place a monopine or some other type of design in that location in a way that minimizes aesthetic impacts on the community. The, the second policy consideration that I'd like to raise this evening is this draft code eliminates the option to attach macro wireless facilities to utility poles in the right of way. This is something that the old code has allowed for the past couple, well, couple decades, I guess. And AT&amp;T does now have what, macro wireless facilities on utility poles subject to a franchise agreement with the county that outlines the rights and responsibilities to do so. This can be a great option for signing wireless facilities. It avoids building a new vertical structure. So instead of putting a tower, say, on a parcel, a wireless carrier might extend a utility pole and add a macro facility to that. I thank you for your time this evening, and I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Stephen, can we try it again? Could you unmute yourself?
Certainly.
There you go, now we got you.
Sorry, I was on the phone with the city of Tumwater's planning department and their transportation department. They were answering some of the questions I had. I jumped on the call today because I'm, I'm just a citizen. I live here in the city of Tumwater in the Bradbury development, which is on the edge of the county at Old Highway 99, just north of 93rd. I don't know if you're familiar with that area. The questions I had is, when you look at planning moving forward and with other developments coming in, it sounds like Rob Rice is wanting to put another development on the other side of the road called the Enclave. Yeah, the Enclave. My concern is the roadway, 90, both 93rd and Old Highway 99 are now destroyed. There's giant potholes and cracks. And not only that, with the amount of homes that they go in here, it looks like the Preserve's got 544 homes, and there'll be just about 200 in Bradbury. There is no possible way Old Highway 9 is a two-lane road is gonna, is going to be able to handle that type of traffic. It's already a conveyor belt. There's no bike lane whatsoever. You got little kids from the Preserve trying to bike into Tumwater about getting hit by cars. It, it's just unsafe the way it is now. The road condition's unsafe. And I'm wondering why the developer wasn't required to widen both Old Highway 99 as well as 93rd Avenue going toward I-5.
Is Jim frozen, I'm concerned? Oh, there we are.
Yeah, was, or was that it, Stephen, you're done?
Well, I, I, I just have that question, and then I wanted to follow that up with, is continued development, is even gonna be required to fix the, I guess they call it a pork chop, or traffic calls it the pork chop. The only entrance in and out of Bradbury forces traffic to go southbound on Old Highway 99. Well, when the entire municipality and everything you're gonna go and do is north of the development, that lends to problems. And the problems that are occurring are people are going out that exit, and they're making an immediate U-turn right in front of traffic on Old Highway 99 that's doing 55-plus miles an hour. Is it designed to be that way? Is it legal? No. However, the condition exists because of human nature.
Right. And I, and I hear your concerns, but I, that seems more of a staff issue to me than what we're doing here. And, and is that Tumwater, or is that the county?
So, Bradbury is city of Tumwater. The road is partially Tumwater, partially the county, partially the state. And the proposed development that is on, directly on the other side, is in the county. So when I talked with the folks in the city, they said you need to address that with the county planning commission and ensure that they're taking care of what the, the needs are for the road in that community based on the increased housing.
I'm gonna direct you to staff on that one, because that hasn't even come up in front of us as of, to my knowledge, as of yet. So, if you contact staff, Steve, they'll, they will have better answers for you than what we're doing right now.
Okay, and who should I contact?
Jennifer, you got an answer for that?
Yeah, I spoke with Stephen earlier today. So Brett Beres is our Development Services Manager, and he and his team work with developers as they develop property. And also Scott Lynn Bloom is our county engineer and can talk to you about concurrency and how developers pay for impacts to roadways and other things. So, I believe Steve has his contacts now.
Okay, that's perfect. The only thing in my notes was, in, in long-term planning for the county, are you planning utilities, not just water and sewer, but electric, that's gonna be capable of handling EV cars and in all these homes with EV chargers? And then how is that gonna look like from an infrastructure standpoint?
Right now, Stephen, all that stuff you're asking is above our pay grade. That, you know, we're just directed to do what the county, or what the commissioners are asking us to do, and that hasn't come up for us.
Okay, perfect, I'll add that to the list.
Okay, thanks, dude. Hey, looks like I've got Quanta? Could you unmute yourself, Quanta? If you're still there and would like to speak? I keep thinking I'm doing something wrong here. Quanta, one more shot here. Am I doing something wrong, Paulie? Okay, we're gonna, I'm sorry, Quanta, we can't hear you. We're gonna move on. So our next item on the agenda is, I apologize, Quanta, if you want to send us something, a written note, please do, and we will get back to you. So our next item on the agenda is work session, capital improvement program minor amendments, and that's Jennifer.
Yes, thank you, Jennifer Davis, Community Planning Manager. And also on the call tonight is our esteemed Assistant County Manager, Robin Campbell, who is here to help answer questions about these capital improvement program amendments. So I don't have a PowerPoint, this should be brief. In your packet, you received a memorandum describing a couple of minor amendments proposed to the Thurston County Capital Improvement Program, or CIP, which, as you know, was most recently updated in December 2020. We try to update it at least once a year. As a reminder, the CIP is a six-year financial plan that is required as part of the county's capital facilities element of our comprehensive plan. So that's why it comes to the planning commission, because it's part of our comprehensive plan. The purpose of the CIP is to identify anticipated capital projects over the next six years, where they're gonna be located, their estimated cost and funding source. It's really, it's just a planning tool to provide transparency to the public about how the county plans to spend dollars on capital projects over the coming six-year period. It's not a budget. We do amend it when we need to align it with the county budget, and that's where we are today. In this case, the spring budget amendments have anticipated that county funds need to be spent on a couple of projects this year that were not previously included in the CIP. These two projects, which are described in detail in your packet, these are both for county administrative facilities. So the need for additional space for county administrative offices, that's discussed in our comp plan under the capital facilities chapter. And these two projects really help implement those objectives as a space need solution. So the two projects are a lease and associated tenant improvements for a property on Pacific Avenue. And that's to house county administrative offices. And then the purchase of buildings on, it's called the Mottman Complex in Tumwater to house the elections and records functions of the county. So, the project details are in your packet, as well as some of the financial information. Those are also posted on the county website. The amendment is not about the projects themselves. The amendment is about adding these project descriptions and financing numbers to the CIP, which will enable the county to spend real estate excise tax funds on these projects in 2021. So it's a procedural step that is necessary to enable the expenditure of those funds. And so we're asking that the planning commission set a public hearing on these amendments for June 2nd in order to maintain consistency with our budget adoption timeline. And again, Robin is here to help answer your questions about these projects, and I can answer any questions about the process.
Any questions from any of you guys?
Just when I, I had difficulty finding where the dollars associated with these two units were.
So in your packet, attached to the memorandum, is a, there are a couple of tables. And in those tables, there, it calls out the individual projects, and then the dollar amounts. And you'll look under the year 2021. I believe it's, let me look at my copy that I had up on my screen, and then it disappeared. One moment. So if you look under Table 7-2, so it should be on about page four of your memorandum, toward the bottom of that table, you have Mottman Complex purchased and 3,000 Pacific Avenue lease and tenant improvements. If you go over, you see for 2021 slated, there's sums of $6 million for Mottman Complex and $7 million for the Pacific Avenue lease and tenant improvements.
So we're looking at a $13 million increase, is that correct?
Those are the estimated costs to expend for REIT funds in 2021, that's correct.
Do we have a motion to set a public hearing for June 2nd, 2021?
Wait the motion.
Any second?
Second.
Okay, so we have the motion to set a public hearing for June 2nd, 2021 for the 2021-2026 Capital Improvement Program Minor Amendment. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so moving forward on that, Jennifer.
Thank you, thank you, Robin, for being here.
Thanks, Robin. Good to see your face. So we have the work session now, or the 2021 Building Lands Overview.
Great, thanks, Chair. I'm gonna pass it off pretty quickly. I'm joined tonight with Allison Osterberg and Michael Ambrosi from Thurston Regional Planning Council, and we will be talking about the 2021 Buildable Lands Report. So this is a report that the county uses when we update a lot of our major plans, like the comprehensive plan or joint plans and other planning documents as well. So, without further ado, Allison and Michael, I will pass it over to you.
Thank you, Maya. So I'm Michael Ambrosi, and here with Allison Osterberg. We're both planners with Thurston Regional Planning Council. And we're here to give you an update on the 2021 Buildable Lands Report that Thurston Regional Planning Council's been working on. So I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen here. Can everyone see that okay? All right, so I'll go ahead and get started. So the Buildable Lands Report is a requirement under Washington State's Growth Management Act. GMA was passed in 1990, and it set these 13 goals that cities and counties should be planning towards. It also set up the framework for how planning occurs in Washington State. So underneath those 13 GMA goals, there are the countywide planning policies, which are the joint policies put together by the county and the jurisdictions and cities and towns that need to be consistent with GMA's goals. Underneath that are each city's and the county's comprehensive plans, and then the development regulations for each jurisdiction underneath that. So there has to be consistency up and down with this. So the development regs must be consistent with the comp plan goals. Comp plan goals must be consistent with the joint countywide planning policies, and all of those must be consistent with GMA. The Buildable Lands Report was an amendment that was added later that said for the fastest-growing counties in Western Washington, you need to take a step back every once in a while before you do your comprehensive plan update, and you need to evaluate your growth trends, and you need to look at your projections, and make sure that the development that's occurred, as well as what's been projected over the next 20 years, is consistent with those GMA and comp plan goals. And if there isn't consistency, the counties and the city are required to identify reasonable measures, which would be corrective. And if there isn't consistency, the counties and the city are required to identify reasonable measures, which would be corrective measures, essentially, to bring your development trends into alignment with GMA. The Billable Lands Report is due to Commerce about three years prior to the comp plan updates, and that is so that the information in the Billable Lands Report can inform the comprehensive plan update process. Funding for billable lands comes from the Department of Commerce. It's awarded to Thurston County. Thurston County has contracted with Thurston Regional Planning Council to do the work. TRPC has completed four billable lands reports now. The first one was back in 1997, I believe. And TRPC's role in billable lands really has a lot to do with our history of doing forecasting and population projections for the region. And that was sort of codified in the countywide planning policies. The countywide planning policies state that TRPC will develop projections for Thurston County jurisdictions, and that they will complete the review. Allison and I have been giving this presentation to the cities and the counties, planning commissions across the county, and Thurston County is a little unique because it has jurisdiction over both rural and urban areas. And it's important to keep this in mind because the billable land's goals for the GMA and billable land expectations for urban and rural areas are very different. So urban areas are the parts of the county where there is existing services, and the expectation is that's where most of the growth that will occur in Thurston County is going to occur. It's going to be in those areas where there already are existing infrastructure, where there's public facilities, and where they can provided, they can be provided efficiently. The goal for the rural areas is that, obviously, development will continue to occur in the rural areas, but it should be consistent with rural lifestyles, and it should preserve the rural economies that are important in the rural areas. So different goals. And keep this in mind because some of the metrics that we'll talk about tonight may not apply to both the urban areas and the rural areas. Some will be specific to one or the other. So the Billable Lands Report, the 2021 Billable Lands Report, we divided into two different sections. So volume one focuses on the GMA goals that I talked about. And there's really two metrics that we need to look at, that we're required to look at under statute to assess whether or not we're developing, whether or not our growth trends are consistent with GMA's goals. One is achieve densities. That has to do with housing densities, and the other one is capacity. Is there enough developable land? Volume two, the report has to deal with, deals with some regional goals that we've adopted that are a little bit more stringent, a little bit more, you know, above and beyond GMA's goals. And namely, that's the sustainable Thurston targets that were identified back in 2013. So I'm gonna go into a little bit more detail on all these topic areas, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of a spoiler. So the findings of the Billable Lands Report are that we're doing really well in, in working towards our GMA goals. Where we're struggling is with those regional goals. So let's dive into some data that kind of backs up those findings. The first thing that we're looking at is urban densities. So this is the average number of dwelling units per acre that we're seeing for new development within the urban parts of Thurston County, the urban areas. So this chart shows the average housing density for both the cities, the unincorporated UGAs, and then the urban areas as a whole across Thurston County. The intent with billable, with billable lands, or with GMA, is that we want our urban areas to have densities that are consistent with urban growth. And there's not a real hard threshold for that, but we usually use four units per acre as kind of a minimum density for urban development. So in this chart, you can see that across our urban areas, the development that we've seen over the past 20 years is well above that four unit per acre threshold. And it's been increasing over time. So in the early 2000s, average densities were 5.7 units per acre. Over the past five years, 2015 to 2019, that's risen to over 10 units per acre. So it's almost doubled over this 20-year time period. And a lot of that has to do with where we've seen development. So this chart just compares the housing densities over the past five years for the different urban areas, the different jurisdictions, as well as some different types of areas with, within the county. Olympia has our highest densities right now at just over 15 units per acre, followed by Lacey and Yelm. And our urban corridors, which are downtown areas and kind of those close neighborhoods near our frequent transit area, transit routes. Those are areas that are zoned for very high densities. We've been seeing a lot of growth there, and they have achieved densities of over 70 units per acre. So it's really been the housing growth that we've seen in those areas, mostly multifamily, again, high density, that's been driving the increase in densities countywide. The Billable Lands Report also looks at densities within our rural areas, mostly focusing on a minimum lot sizes, and lot sizes for new developments in the rural county. And I like to show this map. This map is the zoning map of Thurston County from 1981. So almost, she's almost 40 years old at this point. And you'll notice a big part of the southeast part of the county is in this unmapped used district. So in, in 1981, there really weren't any development standards for growth that occurred in those areas. As a result, there are a lot of smaller lots that were subdivided, and typically smaller lots near our lakes and waterfronts, stream, stream and river fronts. And these legacy lots, you know, when, when zoning densities were then reduced after GMA was passed, there are a lot of these smaller legacy lots that kind of continue to exist, and we're continuing to see development on them. And the trends for rural densities really highlight that. So over the past 20 years, when we look at those smallest lots, the zero to two acre lots, again, most of those being legacy lots from before GMA. In the early 2000s, 58% of new housing was on a lot that was less than two acres in size. Over the past five years, that's down to 40%. When we look at larger lots, again, these would be the lots that are consistent with these newer zoning districts, the one to five, one to 10, one to 20, and the natural resource zones. So those 10 acre lots, we've seen about 3% of housing growth going on those in the early 2000s, and that's up to 13% now. So our findings for achieved densities, when we look at our urban areas, we're seeing densities that are consistent with urban development over four units per acre. And we're seeing the housing densities are increasing over time. And for our rural areas, we are seeing growth in our rural areas, and we're seeing growth on a range of densities for the smaller lots and those larger lots, increasing lot sizes and densities that are appropriate for the rural areas. The next topic that we look at in the Billable Lands Report is capacity. And when we talk about capacity, we're talking about two different things. We're evaluating how much land is actually developable, and then in zones that allow residential uses, where we come up with an estimate of how many dwelling units could be built. We calculate capacity. TRPC maintains a model just for, for getting at this topic. And the model looks at a parcel-by-parcel basis. It looks at existing uses. That might be, you know, existing housing, existing commercial structures. It looks at what is allowed under current zoning and development regulations. It also looks at any environmental constraints that might be on that parcel. And it pulls all this information together to come up with an estimate of how many dwelling units could be built on that parcel. For the urban areas, when we look at residential capacity, the report finds that there's about 85,000 dwelling units that are on the ground right now. And TRPC's model shows that there's capacity for an additional 50,000 new homes over the next capacity for about 50,000 new units. When we look at the growth that's projected over a 20-year timeframe, we're projecting a demand for 41,000 new housing units. And that means that our capacity exceeds the demand by about 18%. We generally look for excess capacity to be within a kind of 10 to 25% range. That's kind of what allows for a healthy housing market. We do a similar exercise for commercial and industrial land. So just going, looking at commercial land here, right now in Thurston County, in Thurston County's urban areas, excuse me, there's 2,400 acres of land that are developed for commercial purposes. And TRPC's model shows that there's an additional 2,200 acres that are developable for commercial purposes. That's greater than the projected need, which is for about 1,200 acres, giving us an excess capacity of 45%. On the industrial side, there's less industrial land overall. There's about 1,100 acres that are developed on the ground right now. Our model shows that there's capacity for 1,700 new, or acres, and there's a need for about 200 acres of industrial land with an excess capacity of about 88%. Those numbers are both pretty high, excess capacity of 45% and 88%, and there's a good reason for that. Projecting the actual need for industrial land space is, is very challenging. It's probably the most challenging aspect of the Billable Lands Report. Because two different businesses, even if they're in a similar industry, could have very, very different building space requirements and land requirements, just depending on the unique characteristics of that, of that business. So having a large amount of excess capacity means that there is extra billable land, should there be variations in the type of employment that we see in Thurston County. So it just acts as a buffer. So our findings for looking at capacity in the urban areas, so is there sufficient billable land in the urban areas to accommodate 20 years of commercial industrial development and residential development? So we find that, yes, there's enough capacity for 20 years of housing growth, and there's enough capacity for 20 years of commercial and industrial growth, acknowledging that there's a lot more uncertainty in how much land will actually be needed for commercial and industrial development. So when we go back to that early slide, when we look at the elements of the Thurston County Billable Lands Report, under that GMA goal section, so yes, we're finding that we're doing well for achieved densities and for urban capacity. And based on these findings, we are not recommending, or we don't need to identify reasonable measures. So again, reasonable measures would have been those corrective measures that the cities and the county would be required to adopt to bring growth trends more into alignment with GMA's goals. That doesn't mean that everything is going really well in Thurston County. We do recognize that there are some challenges, and there are some uncertainties. So I've listed a few topics here that could affect both the, the housing projections, as well as, so the demand for housing, as well as the capacity for housing. So the first one that I have here is sewer. So in TRPC's model, when we talk about how much capacity there is, we assume that infrastructure, sewer included, will be extended as new development occurs. There are some parts of Thurston County's urban areas where we recognize that, just based on the topology, or perhaps the distance, the distance from existing infrastructure, that it could be very difficult to extend that infrastructure and to actually achieve and realize the densities that we're projecting for those areas. So sewer is one, one area's challenge. Second bullet point, I just kind of identified as what I call the urban rural housing split. And this really has to do with our housing projections. So over the next 20 years, will we see a significant shift in demand from urban areas to rural areas, or vice versa, from rural areas to urban areas? And I think the COVID-19 pandemic has highlighted a lot of these issues. So with the rise of telework, does that mean that people will move from urban areas to rural areas? It could also mean that more, we see more migration to Thurston County from, you know, the Seattle, the northern urban areas. There's a couple other topics that we've highlighted here, endangered species and permitting exempt wells. So again, the what will the impact of endangered species listings be on the amount of capacity in the rural areas, as well as the, the availability to get a permitting exempt well in the rural areas? So all these factors shift capacity and shift demand from the urban areas to the rural areas. And the last thing that I have here is housing affordability. So the Billable Lands Report finds that there is enough developable land for 20 years of growth, but housing affordability really isn't a consideration of the report. It's not something that we're required to look at under statute. So yes, we're saying that there's enough capacity, but we're not making any findings as to whether or not that land will be developable for, you know, a lower income or moderate income household who's moving to the area. The other topic that I mentioned was Sustainable Thurston. And this is another challenge that I think we're facing. So Sustainable Thurston was a, you know, countywide planning project that was completed in 2013. And it really tried to engage the community to answer this question. How should Thurston County look, function, and feel in 2035? And the community came up with this vision that kind of ranged on these four different topic areas. So the vision for our north county centers and corridors, or those downtown areas, and again, neighborhoods along the transit corridors, was for dense neighborhoods where people actually have access to, they can get to work, they can get to the grocery store, go to restaurants without depending on a vehicle. They have access to bus, or they can walk there. For those residential neighborhoods that are outside of our urban centers and corridors, the vision was for neighborhoods with a range of housing options that are still close to a neighborhood center of some kind, either a civic space or a community center where they can walk to. For the South County communities, the vision was really to maintain that small-town feel and to foster entrepreneurship and economic development in those communities. And finally, for rural lands, the vision was to preserve rural character and protect critical habitat and resource lands. One of the great things about Sustainable Thurston is that in addition to identifying this vision, it also came up with some targets so that we could track our progress towards meeting those goals. So I have two charts here, which kind of outline the two different land use targets identified in Sustainable Thurston. So the one on the left, the target was that at least 95% of new housing built between 2010 and 2035 would be in the urban areas. So this chart shows the percent of housing built after 2010. In between 2010 and 2020, 86% of housing has been in the urban areas. And TRPC's forecasts are housing projections, so that that's not going to change much over the next 20 years. It looks like we got a question.
Michael, I do. Could you tell me the basis for the, the goals on these two areas, 95% and 72%?
So with Sustainable Thurston, we identified that vision, and we were just trying to find some metrics that we could use to, to track whether or not we were how good we were doing in making progress towards that vision. So though, both of these were run through TRPC's Billable Lands Model, the land capacity model that we have. We wanted to find out what is, how can we push the envelope to meet those goals, but do it in a way that was realistic, that we could actually work with the existing development that was on the ground, change zoning regulations and development trends in a meaningful way to actually be achievable. So the goals were intended to be aspirational. We'd have to work hard to get there, but they're still achievable. They're goals that we can theoretically make zoning, make zoning changes, change to our development regulations to actually achieve those goals. Does that answer your question?
Well, I guess partially. If, if they're achievable and we're not meeting them after quite a few years, do, do the go, does the place we're at right now seem morally realistic?
That's a great question, and that's something that Allison's gonna dive into a little bit when I hand it back to her, because that was a topic that came up amongst our group, is that with the development that we've seen over the past 10 years, we haven't seen, we haven't made a lot of progress towards me reaching those goals, which is gonna make it a lot harder to do so over the next 15 years. So I'm gonna let her chime in a little bit in a, in a couple seconds here. So again, that first target was that 95% of new housing would be within the urban areas. Right now, 86% has been within the urban areas. Our, our model shows that that could go up to about 87% just based on the zoning, the development regulations that are on the ground right now, which is well below that 95% target that we set for ourselves. The second target has to do with the housing just within our urban areas. So within our urban areas, the target was that 72% of housing would be within a half mile of an urban center, urban corridor or neighborhood center. The idea being that people who live in our urban areas would have access to those urban amenities. You know, they could walk to, they could walk to work, have access to a bus service, have access to shops and restaurants close to their home. On the ground right now, about 49% of housing is within one of those areas. TRPC's model shows that that's likely to happen, that's likely to be 57% in 2035 with the development regs that are in place right now. And again, that's below the 72% target that we set for ourselves. Another topic that we looked at was natural resource and other rural lands. Preserving farmland, preserving forest land is a goal of both the Thurston County Comprehensive Plan, as well as Sustainable Thurston, so it kind of overlaps these, these two projects. The chart that I have on the left here shows the percent of housing that was built before 2000, and the percent of housing that's projected over the next 20 years. That's on either farmland, timberland, or the remaining parts of Thurston County. When we look at growth that occurred before 2000, about 5% of it was on lands that are currently in farm use, about 1% on timberlands, and most of it, 95% is in those remaining parcels. When we look at growth over the next 20 years, our forecast is showing that about 20% of that, just under 20%, will be on farmland. 38% will be on existing timberland, and 44% will be on those remaining parcels. So what this indicates is that for meeting those goals of preserving natural resource lands, when we look at the growth that's projected, it's gonna be quite challenging to do that without significant change. And I have a note here that when we talk about farmland and timberland in this graphic, we're talking about both land that is zoned for farmer timber, timber use, as well as properties that are taking advantage of one of the current use tax programs, as well as some properties that have land covers that indicate that they're in. as well as some properties that have land covers that indicate that they're in natural resource use. So we know that we're not meeting our Sustainable Thurston targets. That was one of the findings of the Billable Lands Report. So we worked with our Billable Lands Advisory Committee to develop some recommendations, some actions that we could take to make some progress. And I'm going to hand it over to Alison to talk a bit more about that.
Great, thanks, Michael. So as you can see, there's a lot of data, a lot of information that goes into the Billable Lands Report. But, but something that I like to remind folks, when you look at it, is that Billable Lands Report makes a, a prediction about what growth in our county will look like in the next 20 years to inform comprehensive plan updates and to inform planning. And that's based on what we think is likely to happen, based on the rules we have in place today, based on the trends, market trends that we're seeing that are in place now. But it is not locked in stone. If there, if there is something that we want to see in the future that's different from the future that's being shown by Billable Lands, it is up to planning commissions, planning staff, elected officials. It is within your realm to make those changes. And that is what the Billable Lands Report, it's, as Michael said in the beginning, it's an opportunity for you to look back at what has been happening, how well our plans have been helping us achieve our goals. An opportunity to look forward to say, there might be, need to tweak things or move things as you go into your next round of comprehensive plan updates. So our recommendations in the Billable Lands Report are focused around that second volume. They're focused around our regional, our regional targets. And it's important to remember that these recommendations, they're not requirements, they're suggestions. We have shown that Thurston County is really meeting the goals of the Growth Management Act in the patterns of development that we're seeing. But if, if we have an interest regionally in meeting these regional goals, we're not on track to do it. So we did want to have a discussion about, I think, just what Commissioner brought up. Is that vision, that Sustainable Thurston vision, are those goals still viable? Are they still what we want to be striving toward? And if so, what would it take to get there? So we did work with the Stakeholder Committee, the Billable Lands Advisory Committee, had a wide range of folks. And what, a few general recommendations that came out of it, one thing they said is that yes, they still feel like the land use targets and the land use goals that are part of Sustainable Thurston are ones that we should maintain and work toward going toward. It's important to remember that the Sustainable Thurston land use targets were always meant to be stretch goals. They were always going to be challenging to reach. And, and one thing that we see is that even when we look at things now, we haven't seen a lot of change necessarily since, since 2010. So it, in some cases, particularly for the centers and corridors target, we are seeing some change. And so we can get, potentially get closer to seeing Sustainable Thurston targets on a longer timeframe than 2035, which is what we said. So one of the recommendations from the Advisory Committee was to keep striving for those targets, but work toward it on potentially a longer timeframe, such as looking at 2045, which would be the comp plan time period, keep going for it. Another really important part, general recommendation from that group was to make sure that in development decisions, we are articulating the trade offs of development decisions. So when we are permitting development, say in the rural area, there needs to be good, if it's taking away from that goal, those trade offs should be articulated, the trade offs to housing affordability, of transportation costs, climate impacts, impacts to habitat and wildlife, impacts to public health, impacts to equity. So as, when, there may be lots of reasons why we are not on track to meet these goals. But something that might be helpful going forward is having better, better tools to articulate what those trade offs are. And next slide. I'll highlight some of the other specific recommendations that are in the Billable Lands Report. There are things that you all can consider, again, when you take up the next round of your periodic comprehensive plan updates. Again, most of Billable Lands focuses on the urban areas. And one thing we saw is that we are seeing more intense density in our urban centers. But we also look at what we call urban corridors. And so those are areas like Martin Way, Capitol Boulevard, they're the old state highway system through the north county urban areas. And although many of them have kind of had visions of having mixed use dense development, we're seeing that in the city centers. We're not seeing it as much on the corridors. So one of our recommendations is to focus on increasing the, the amount of mixed use and residential development along those corridors. That includes creating incentives for redevelopment, some of the opportunity sites that we identified along the corridors. And another area to focus on are what we call neighborhood centers. And so these are in, those are represented by the little blue dots on that map. There are areas that might be zoned like neighborhood commercial or something like that, where you might just have within a neighborhood, just a small commercial enterprise. That's part of our Sustainable Thurston vision, that every, that a majority of people would be able to be within walking distance of some kind of amenity. So what we found with neighborhood centers is that we have a lot of them. Not many of them are really functioning in the way that was envisioned for that Sustainable Thurston. So two things we can do is, is increase the amount of housing that's near those neighborhood centers. Or look at ways to attract types of businesses that would support the residential development around them. Commissioner Fleischer, did you have a question?
I did, I mean, there's a question on this, well, two things, sort of, how do we increase the amount? We say the goal is to increase the amount of development in there. Is that talking about changing the zoning so you can have denser zoning? Is that what it really meets? Because it's up to developers whether they come in and build. That's my first question. My second question on those dots on the urban centers, has that really worked in most, because my impression is what it's, a little strip mall by a neighborhood is not the kind of thing that makes it an urban living area where you can walk a half a mile for your groceries or your, your normal needs, so. Are, I know the county's been working on that kind of, or the, the region's been working on that kind of stuff, and I'm sort of trying to see where it's really worked.
Yeah, those are really good questions, and they are things that we talked about as part of this. I think on your first question, what we saw in our review with Billable Lands is that regulations for the most part are, that's not, they're not regulatory changes necessarily that are needed. So for these mixed use zones, they exist. Mixed use development is permitted at high density on these corridors. There's been a lot of work done to do those, but we're not seeing that mix of development happen. So they're really, we are going to need to look at some different kinds of market incentives to see that type of development. Now, you're seeing that happen, it's on the downtown areas, the type of development that's happening there that we had not seen in a long time. There are strategies to be learned from what's happening in the urban centers, if that is the type of thing we want to see on our corridors. I, I think there'll be a need to get more, more creative, looking beyond regulatory solutions. The way we set it up, in the recommendations, is that there, a lot of the regulatory tools are there to set the stage. But they're, to actually meet the targets, may need to look for broader opportunities of working with the private sector to see that type of development we want to see on these corridors. For neighborhood centers, that's a really good point. I think they're not really well defined in a lot of ways. And the same thing there, what do we really mean by a neighborhood center? I think revisiting that vision of how they work. For you guys, I think this, these apply probably more in the joint plan areas. There's things I think the cities have said, we focus a lot on downtowns. And to a certain extent, corridors, I think there's interest in the cities in the next round of comp plan updates, doing some neighborhood planning and thinking about the neighborhood center concept. You might see that come up as you're doing joint plan updates for some of these UGA. Next slide. Some recommendations for the general urban areas outside of those centers and corridors. There's, I think you guys have done this as well, there's been a lot of focus on permitting middle density housing in our urban areas and that, we do see that having an effect on some of the changes to the targets in the future. So continuing to enable the types of mixed density in our urban areas, middle density housing in some of those lower red density residential zones. But important one, I think, for the UGAs is looking at these areas that are highlighted on the map here, where a lack of infrastructure poses a potential barrier to future development. And that can be on specific sites within the urban areas where they may not have the cost of, you know, extending sewer little ways or stormwater facilities is a barrier to that type of mixed use development we want to see. In some of the outskirts of the UGAs, what we see are areas, for example, that section in, we see along Young Highway, that's in the MGSA zone. Those areas are, are at low densities and they're zoned at low densities. We don't expect a lot of growth on them. But the expectation we have in Billable Lands is that with anywhere in the UGA within the next 20 years, we'll be receiving urban services. And there are definitely some areas in the UGAs where that is, is probably not because of topography, environmental constraints. They may never really be suitable for the type of urban development we would see and urban services we would expect in an urban area. So a reconsideration of whether those areas are appropriate to have in our urban areas might be something to look at in the next round of comp plan updates. Head to the next slide. The South County and for you guys, this really just applies to Grand Mound. I know you guys are looking at Grand Mound at some point. So we, we saw a lot of success really with the South County cities. And continuing along that line, we're seeing that they are kind of achieving that, some of that vision for those areas in Sustainable Thurston, so continuing to support modest mixed use growth and full development in some of those areas. And I think what we will see is a greater push in those areas for more residential development. People are getting priced out of some of the north county cities. So that mix of smaller South County hubs of commercial and residential. Ahead, next slide. For the rural areas, our recommendation is to support strategies to preserve natural resource lands. You guys have a, a goal in your comprehensive land, in your comprehensive plan of no net loss of ag lands. So looking at that, Michael showed some figures that would be related to that. So I think the work that you guys are doing around ag lands, looking at that, how to support those natural resource uses and make sure the land base is there for that in the future. And I think another thing we looked at is, is around commercial areas, kind of considering what that means in rural areas and how that neighborhood center concept would, does that mean in the rural areas as well? Next slide. So that's sort of a, a greatest hit to the Billable Lands Report. Our next steps, we're getting toward the end here, we're, the next step for the report, it's just pretty much finalized at this point. We're briefing Thurston Regional Planning Council. It will, we'll go to the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners are ultimately sort of our client for the Billable Lands Report. And we'll be looking to deliver that to have it, the report accepted by Thurston Regional Planning Council. And then it'll be delivered to the Board of County Commissioners. And then it's available as a resource to all of you and as you're doing any of your, your planning or comp plan updates. And I think that's what we have for you.
I do have a question. With regard to Sustainable Thurston, if you were to take Goal One and Goal Two and modify the goal to the projection that you have, how would that affect the suggestions that are made in the recommendations?
Oh yeah, great, I should have highlighted this. We did some work with the model, we made some assumptions that if we did those things we sort of highlighted in our recommendations, if we saw more, for example, residential, higher and greater proportion of residential mixed use growth in corridors and or of kind of functioning neighborhood centers, those kinds of things. What we would see is that for that first goal, we would be pretty close. We've took all these, we had a lot of different strategies and it's in the Billable Lands Report if you want to read about it. But our alternative land use scenario shows that we'd get really close on that first goal, on accommodating growth in the urban area. Where our target is 95%. And with the changes we looked at, we would project that we'd be able to get at about 94% of our growth. And, and really within that longer timeframe, we would, we're still, we would still be able to hit that target. It would take, again, a lot of, a lot of work, particularly, I think particularly around the corridors and neighborhood centers. And then for the second target, what our alternative land use scenario showed is that our target is 72%. Some of the changes we looked at for Billable Lands, we could get to 66% of urban area housing. New, yeah, all of it, new and existing within a half mile of an urban center corridor or neighborhood center. So, you know, I think that's a question that, there might be other strategies or things that folks think of as you're going through your comp plan updates. It's sort of up to you to think about how much you want to prioritize working on these areas and striving for, for achieving these goals. But it's sort of the vision that's laid out for the region. And what we're finding is that there are, there are still things that we can do to get us closer to meeting these targets.
Thanks, Alison.
Hi guys, hey, I think more my concern is, I, I love the targets, I love how that's going and headed. But is, in your projections, is there enough buildable land to achieve that? Or what type of building, is it mostly apartments, do condos or? I don't see single family residents being able to hit that goal.
Yeah, so that's TRPC's land capacity model, that's what it looks at. So it, it does find that there is enough developable land. And that includes not only single family lots, it does include multifamily manufactured, excuse me, manufactured homes as well, as well as things like family member units and accessory dwelling units in the urban areas. It also takes into account redevelopment. So we're seeing a lot more redevelopment, especially in our downtown areas and a little bit on our corridors. So we do assume that a certain amount of land that's currently developed right now, it might be redeveloped for residential purposes in the future. So yes, both single family, multifamily vacant lots, indoor lots and redevelopment are all factored into that finding.
Maybe you can make me feel a little bit better about this, because I don't know if I understand it right. But it seems that if we are really wanting to, to push most of our development into these urban corridors, which is obviously, well, I think that's a great idea. The, the purview of the county and the Thurston County Planning Commission then would be pretty limited. And the tools at our disposal for doing that would be a whole lot more carrot, or a whole lot more stick than carrot. Are there some strategies that we should be employing to have more carrots and less sticks?
It's a good question. I mean, I think part of what we're finding is that I don't know how, how, but you know what, who, someone's, one person's stick might be another person's carrot. But if we were to divide it into sort of regulatory mandates versus market incentives, I think what we've seen is that we have put a lot of the regulatory structure in place for corridors. But just because you have the zoning and the standards in place, doesn't mean someone wants to, you still need a private entity to come in and want to build that kind of development. And there are other barriers in place to that. So as far as what the county specifically can do, the county is often a partner on these projects. The counties that we're doing a corridor study right now on the Martin Way, one of our biggest corridors, where we do see a lot of redevelopment potential in the future, particularly in the, in the UGA. So I think the county is a partner along with the City of Lacey for that area that's in the Lacey UGA and the City of Olympia as well. So I think there are, it, it's a bit of a push pull, right? So I think some of our strategies are making sure that it is feasible to do the level of building we want to see in the urban areas. And that, you know, part of what that means is, is that it's less, it's more desirable to develop in those areas and potentially less desirable to build in the rural areas. Or that, or that those developments that is happening in the county is happening in a way that is focused on preserving those areas or conserving those natural resource lands, those natural resources, rural uses, where you want to have them maintained for the future. And so as far as specific strategies, I don't know, Michael, if you have something else to jump in on, that's, I think focusing on those natural That's, I think focusing on those natural resource lands and rural land strategies are, are probably where you have the most purview.
And I don't want to discount the importance of the counties, the areas under the county's jurisdiction in the urban areas too. Because the downtown areas and urban corridors are definitely going to have increasing importance in terms of accommodating growth, looking over the next 20 years. But we are still going to see significant amounts of single family development. And most of that will be in our unincorporated UGAs and kind of the outskirts of the urban areas. So even though, like I said, downtown areas, urban corridors are of increasing importance. We still expect a lot of our growth to be within the unincorporated urban areas.
Do we have any other questions for these two?
Um, I've got one thing. I'm wondering, where did the number of four houses per acre come from? Because I know, I mean, it seems like everything changes as long as I've been here, except for that number. And when we, wait, I'm not.
Yep, go ahead.
Like 200,000 people in Thurston County, that was probably, maybe that was okay. But now it's not going to be long. We're going to be at 300,000. And so doesn't that number need to start moving up too? And I mean, I really see this, and I've said it for years, as the cities need to do a better job of taking. In more density rather than telling rural landowners that we're going to take away their density.
Back to that slide here.
Hi, folks.
Go ahead. Sorry.
Hey, this is Raul. Can anybody hear me?
Yeah. Oh, we're just finishing up Scott's question. We'll get to him in a sec.
The four units per acre, I just wanted to point that out. Anything above about three and a half units per acre, you can't do on septic, just based on the health, the health codes around septic. So that's where that kind of minimum threshold comes into play. When we look at urban densities, I find it more insightful to look at the change over time. So for me, it's more meaningful that we are seeing higher densities because that shows that we're doing a better job of accommodating that growth within our urban areas. That metric is a little bit more meaningful than just, is it above four units per acre?
Okay. Hey, this is Raul. I'm trying to chime in on that, everything that Scott said and everything that you, Andrew have mentioned. There is a problem with the cities. And, and I've seen that when I was working for Labor and Industries as a compliance officer. There's a lot of resistance by the public of building more density, density, higher density units. All you have to look is that you're a mistake by the lake building. There was so much community pushback on that, which was a great project. Yet it, it was like pulling teeth trying to get that off the ground. That's happening all over the place in the cities. So as I understand, and it's a very good idea to have a very lofty ideal of increasing the density in the urban areas, which they can easily accommodate it. It is not going to work if you keep getting this pushback from the community. Now, if we look at the country or the urban growth boundaries where you have zoning of one house per five acres. Maybe we should reconsider or something for one house or two and a half acres. Which still preserves the, the rural nature of the, of the place, but it can accommodate some of the things that people want. People don't want, a lot of people don't want to live in the cities and especially after COVID. People don't want to live in this density, high density areas because of the risk involved in it. And that's one of the things that we need to accommodate, just like Scott says. Community is changing. The density of the county is changing. So we need to accommodate to change our goals a little bit to make everything fit together well. It's a puzzle. It's a growing puzzle. That doesn't mean that we have to give up our ideas. However, we need to modify them a little bit to change with the times. That's my, my.
Thanks, Raul. Okay, so we're, I'm going to move us on. We need to get going. I appreciate Michael and Allison. Good to see you, Allison. It's been a long time. It's always nice to see your smile.
Nice to see you guys. Thank you.
So we're going to move to the wireless code work session.
Great. I'm going to do a little opener and then turn it over to Kate and Ken. So just before we begin, we've been getting a lot of public comments around this, as you know. I want to acknowledge those and that all those comments are being forwarded to the planning commission as they come in. Even though we don't have a public hearing set yet or an open public comment period. We always accept and pass along public comments on any issues that are within the purview of the planning commission and under active review. So just so folks listening understand that all of those comments are being forwarded. And the county has hired outside expertise to help us with this. And Ken is here tonight. He has significant experience helping local governments navigate this complex issue. And I think he's going to talk a little bit about his experience tonight. I do want to emphasize that the county's current wireless code is out of compliance with federal law. So right now we actually don't have much local control at all. And we're trying to update this code in order to come into compliance. And part of that update is to ensure that we have, you know, legal permitting processes and requirements in place that can ensure that wireless facilities are cited appropriately in our, appropriately in our community with appropriate local controls. And getting that right is a priority issue for the county. So that's why, that's actually why staff is sort of asking, pushing a little bit to ask for the planning commission to set a public hearing for later in June. I know a lot of folks are asking for additional work. To me, setting a public hearing opens up that opportunity for the broad public to get notified and to provide formal public comment. That then we can sit down and digest and have our consultant and staff and our legal teams look at, respond to, and bring solutions back to the planning commission. And there'll be lots of deliberation and work sessions after that public hearing. Before the planning commission will send a recommendation on to the Board of County Commissioners. And then the Board of County Commissioners goes through the same steps and process and holds a second public hearing. So I just wanted, for folks confused about the process or where we are in the process, it's still early. There's a lot of time to make changes and updates through the, to the draft. And we don't have to delay a public hearing to do that. That actually might help us put a fine point on some of the changes that we may need to investigate and change. So I just want to put that out there and I'll turn it over to Kate and Ken to do their presentation and kind of bring some clarity to some of the questions we've been hearing.
Thank you. And before I start, I wanted to give Ken a chance here. He wanted to give some of his background for you.
Thank you, Jennifer and Kate and Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Thank you. It's nice to be here with you this evening. I, I do want to give you just a, maybe even a little bit more of my background than perhaps I usually do in these kind of situations. Given some of the comments that you've received and I have not seen the vast majority of them. I've only seen a few. So if, if you would indulge me, I have represented local governments for over 35 years. And most of that work has been in telecommunications and utility issues. Some of it has been general local government work. I have served as a town attorney for multiple towns, a city attorney for multiple cities. I'm currently serving as a county attorney. And I'm also a former local elected official. I was a planning commissioner for five and a half years. A city councilman for six and a mayor for eight. I spent 14 years as a local government representative on a federal communications commission advisory committee. Basically advocating to the FCC to please preserve local control and to avoid preempting local control. A very difficult conversation to have at that level of our government. So I think it's fair to say that I've dedicated probably the majority of my adult life. Representing local governments and advocating for local control. And that has given me an understanding of where we have it and where we don't have it. As you've already heard, there's a whole variety of opinions on this issue. And you're going to hear many more differences of opinions on these issues as we go forward. My philosophy is to assume positive intent. Unless a speaker gives an indication that we shouldn't assume that, that's what I try to do. So where Mr. Stottlemyre has noted in his correspondence with you that staff and I either don't understand the law or are intentionally misleading you on the law. I'm going to suggest a third way to look at it. And that is that we simply have a good faith difference of opinion with him and perhaps others as to what the law means. And I think I would say that with the industry as well, because I certainly often do not agree with the industry as to what they think the law means. And I think if you were to hire an industry lawyer or somebody who spent most of their time working for the industry, you'd get a bias interpreting the law in a way that most favors the industry. If you were to hire a lawyer who specializes in representing citizen groups and suing local governments over wireless sighting issues, as has been suggested that you ought to do, you would get a bias on that side. Let me tell you what my bias is. My bias and my goal is to explain to you as best as I can, what the extent of your regulatory authority is. Where that regulatory authority has been preempted, in some cases by state law, in many cases by federal law. It identify for you where the law is not clear to this day, is still not clear. And what the potential risks are of interpreting the law one way as opposed to another way. And really at the end of the day, and I know staff shares this goal, we want to put you in the best position that we possibly can. So that you can make an informed decision and an informed recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. When we are through with this, your portion of this process. So I look forward to your questions. I look forward to working with you through these issues. I look forward to engaging in all of the different issues where we have disagreements. Sometimes with citizens, sometimes with industry representatives. And, and I think through that kind of discussion, you will get to the right place at the end of the day. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kate and again, look forward to your questions and our later discussion.
Thank you. Okay. So, good evening. I wanted to provide a brief highlight of several items for the draft wireless code that I didn't touch on the last time we met. One of which is related to the permit types. There have been, there hasn't been a change to required permit types in the draft. But there have been some changes to the materials required and now co-locations are included in small wireless facilities. So there have been changes in the language that would affect the type of facilities that are permitted, but the actual permit types themselves have not changed. And I just wanted to provide some photos here of what small wireless facilities when concealed could look like, just because it's a, it's a new facility that wasn't addressed in our code previously. One type of permit is administrative. That generally includes co-locations on existing structures and small cell facilities in the right of way. The process with, for that would be to determine whether the materials necessary for an application have been provided. Review the application and whether it meets specific requirements of our code and then either approve and deny or deny based on that information. The other type of permit would be for a hearing examiner process, which generally the towers fall into. We would determine whether all the materials necessary have been provided. If the application is complete, we would mail a notice of application to properties within 2,600 foot radius. We would receive public comments, review CIPA, mail and post notice of a public hearing. And then the hearing examiner holds an open record public meeting. They make a determination, including any conditions necessary for the permit. So any of the wireless facility permits fall under the existing process that we have at the county. For environmental review, a CIPA environmental checklist is required under the hearing examiner review. And NIPA would be required when triggered for federal regulations. It would be reviewed by the FCC's Wireless Telecommunications Bureau. Radio frequency is addressed in a few select locations of the code. It is involved when applicants apply, they must submit a signed statement from a professional that cites that the site meets RF standards for federal law. The county may submit materials to a third party professional for review. And compliance with federal law is a condition of a permit and corrective action can be taken if they don't meet that requirement. There's also a change in language for the draft regarding a gap in coverage. The previous code mentioned it as requirements, but that is no longer a means for denial. Another thing to consider is the location of wireless facilities. We do have the ability to protect few quarters and require that a site minimize impacts compared to another site. So just a couple of things to keep in mind. I am asking that the planning commission set a public hearing for June 2nd or, or later date to invite public involvement in the wireless communication draft. And if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer or I'll bring questions or answers back to you based on your direction.
Hi Caitlin, I have a question about the compliance issues that, that we're at right now. That we are, our code has been, has not been updated in so long that we're out of compliance. What are the current and future ramifications of that? Does this mean that, that we are being more heavily regulated by the feds or less regulated? Or do we just operate under our, our current code? Or how's this, how's this impacting us?
Well, maybe Ken could elaborate this on a little bit more. But the thing to keep in mind is that there are items that aren't addressed in our code. So our code applies until those items are applied for and under federal law. If somebody applies for it and we don't have anything to address it, then we're, we're really only able to do the minimum. We can't, we can't enforce any additional requirements that we would have the ability to enforce if we don't have it in our code. Ken, would you like to elaborate on that?
Yeah. In addition to that, Commissioner, there are just a couple of other examples. Starting back in 2009 or 2010, the FCC started to adopt shot clocks. And there's actually a variety of different kinds of shot clocks that apply to different kinds of sites. And for those who don't know, a shot clock is just a federal regulation about action needing to be taken within a certain period of time. The federal law still is what the federal law is. Congress passed a law in 2014 that said for certain kinds of modifications to sites, a county or a city or a town has no discretion. And if it meets certain criteria, it must be approved. And if you don't act within the shot clock period, it's deemed approved. There's nothing in the code that deals with any of those changes to federal law. So part of this becomes just an incredible burden on the staff because if an applicant were to come in and say, I meet the criteria under this federal law. Staff doesn't have anything in the current code to give it any direction. It takes a while to figure out what's at play on the federal level since the code is not in line with the federal requirements. And you may find yourself bumping up against that shot clock by the time you figure out where we are. So part of coming into compliance is not just to be able to assert the authority that the county still does have. But part of it also is to put staff and the planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners and hearing examiners in a position to be able to address these issues clearly without having to go figure them out. Because we would have a code that would be consistent with the constraints of federal law.
And we have had this situation come up a few times in the last year.
Could you, could you give me an example of that, just so that way I can wrap my head around it a little bit?
Of, of what we are missing in our code that.
But you had to take action on something that we didn't have code for because you're up against a shot clock?
Sure. One application specifically was a modification to a tower that was not considered a substantial change. And it, it did fall under the requirements of not being a substantial change based on the federal definition. We don't have that in our code. And it, that, this wasn't a situation where there, where we could have probably applied more regulation than, than what we would have been allowed to anyways. It was just a lot of, a lot of work with the staff and our, our staff attorney to try to figure out how to, how to approve the permit without having any of that in our code. So in that situation, it was, it was really just a bit of a burden on staff.
Quick question. If an applicant wants to put in a tower, is it based on need or desire? And if it's on need, how do they define and justify that need?
Kate, do you want me to take that?
Sure.
Well, that, that again, some of the answer to that question wo- would depend on what kind of facility we're putting about, you referenced tower commissioner, so I'm going to assume macro tower. A lot of people are concerned about these small cells in the right of way, and I know some of those are obtrusive, they're visually obtrusive. Nobody likes to look at them. Um, I don't consider those towers. So when I hear someone say tower, I think of the macro sites, the one hundred foot uh, uh, towers. So
Let's just say that it that applies to everything that we're talking about here.
Okay, in in most cases, there are always exceptions, but in most cases federal law allows for local control as long as regulations do not prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting a company from being able to provide wireless service. So you might say no higher than seventy feet. And the applicant might say, I need it to be a hundred and ten feet. And if you don't let me have the height, I'm not going to be able to provide service. So your local regulation that says no more than seventy is preempted. And then you have to evaluate their radio frequency engineering coverage and have an independent person look at it for the county and eventually get to a point where are we comfortable believing that we actually need to give them what they want? Or no, we think they can make their network work by putting in maybe a, a greater number of smaller sites. Uh, so a lot of it is fact specific. Sometimes it's based on height, sometimes it's based on the physical location. If you want them to move it to avoid a view corridor, will they still be able to make the network work from a different location? It just, it, it really depends upon the factual situation. The gap in coverage issue, which you heard a little bit about earlier. Um, it, it, one of the impetuses behind the federal law today is to allow for greater capacity. It used to be in the early days after the telecommunications act that counties and cities could say, you must prove that you have no service in this area. And if you can't prove that, we don't have to let you put a site there. But even if they do have some service in that area, maybe they just don't have good service. And maybe with the exploding demand and the increase in the number of devices that people have using wireless, what they really need is not to create new service, but to expand the capacity of their existing service. Um, that now is a criteria too. It's not just that you, you can make them demonstrate, we've got nothing there and this is necessary to fix that problem. So it, it gets, we could get very far into the weeds on this, but I hope that gives you a little bit of a flavor for the complexity of these.
I, I would assume that right now, um, in our current code and what we're looking to do in this new code that the portion of that that looks at the RF emissions and then there has to be some independent third party or some, but maybe not even independent third party, but some professional that says that these RF emissions are within federal guidelines. Has this ever, had these RF emissions ever been challenged by somebody in Thurston County? And if they have been challenged and that challenge was successful, what does a corrective action consist of?
I think I would most likely need to check with our prosecuting attorney's office on that question.
Yeah, a- and Commissioner Casino, I, I'm somewhat familiar with some of the federal court cases from around the country. I can't recall one from Thurston County or even in the state of Washington where that was an issue. So, uh, so I, I, I couldn't give you a local uh, answer to that. I could give you some thoughts about how it would work based upon some other court decisions.
So, so it doesn't. I, I guess what I'm getting from that is that these RF emissions almost certainly stay within federal guidelines. It's very rare for it to go outside. And when it has happened, it's not even happened in this area. Would that be fair to say?
You know, it, it may have happened and it may be happening frankly, within that area. One of my complaints with the FCC and and this is probably one of those areas that I would agree with a lot of your citizens is that the FCC has done a lousy job of updating their, uh, their regulations. Um, but like it or not, we're stuck with the regulations that we have right now until they change them. So, uh, yes, and I, I would say in my experience, I've almost never seen when testing is done to see a site show, uh, show, uh, a violation of the FCC's standards. Um, I think there is some increased likelihood that that might occur in the future as we see more sites uh, deployed and as we see sites deployed that are lower to the ground. Um, uh, and again, I think a lot of people would tell you, well, even if you got the testing done based on the existing regulations, that's still not going to satisfy me. If the test results come back and say they're in compliance with FCC standard, but unfortunately, I think that's the best we can do at this point.
Hi, uh, this is Raul. I have a question regarding this, um, wagmire that we're seem to be facing here. So as the county government, we're supposed to represent the citizens of our county. But it seems to me that, uh, the FCC kind of trumps everything else, even though they don't represent the citizens of the county. Should them, and I believe that local governments have the ultimate authority over federal regulations if they don't agree with the federal regulations. So I think that we're just kind of a talking of, uh, out of two sides of the mouth here. Bottom line, and we need to make our own rules and regulations. And I agree, the county needs some very distinct rules and regulations that protect our citizens and our concerns and still allows for progress to happen. Uh, it sounds to me like the FCC is the ultimate authority here and it's like I, if you look around the nation, there's many states that are saying no to a federal government in many different instances. I, it's time to, we need to take a preemptive approach to this and develop some very good regulations that take care of our citizens. And rather than just cave into the FCC requirements, which seems to a- apply only to the industry. Wishes and desires. That's all I want to say.
Well, it's Ed, I gotta comment, Raul, I mean, I gotta disagree with you. I mean, it's just not the law. Uh, as much as we'd like it to be, the local government is at the bottom of the pecking order. I mean, the federal laws and the state laws. I mean, the Growth Management Act, we're, we're, we're having to deal with complying with those all the time. So this is nothing with the wireless than it is in so much else where our hands are tied.
I do agree, the Growth Management Act is something that benefits all the citizens as a whole. But communications is something that is actually provided to all the citizens of the state of Washington and, you know, rural America doesn't get the cell phone coverage that the cities get yet. I don't see any big push of trying to prove that service. So
Right now to do that, Raul.
Caitlin, if we could go back to my earlier question, uh, and and sharpen that point a little bit. What kind of mechanisms would corrective action actually include if there was a violation?
I, you know, honestly, I would have to look into that. Uh, I'm not sure if it would be a, uh, reporting the site to the FCC or if it would just be, uh, an internal uh, violation, the way that we normally would find a site if they were not in compliance with their permit.
I know, like, in a lot of the other building and development stuff that if, if we find somebody doing something out of compliance in development, we red tag them, stop work and then they have to fight their way back through it and possibly pay some fines and do some commission and that kind of stuff. Is there a way that our new code could put some kind of, um, requirements like that on anybody that is violating?
Yeah, uh, there
Kate, can I, can I jump in here? Um, I, Commissioner, I, I think that if we're going to make an analogy to the scope of enforcement authority, w- we need to look more at, uh, other areas where the federal government imposes standards or this, even the state government, it might be clean air or clean water or hazardous waste. Um, there, and I'm not an expert in any one of those categories, but as opposed to a building code, which is a purely, most of the time matter of local concern. Um, I will tell you that's, this is one of those gray areas I referenced earlier. Um, uh, there are, uh, there are some that say uh, fines can be imposed on the local level, uh, you, that you can go turn them off and shut them down until they come into compliance. Uh, and there are others on the other side of that argument who say the only authority a local government has, if it has evidence of a violation of federal RF standards is to report it to the FCC and that the FCC has the sole and exclusive enforcement authority. Um, a- and on that point, I, I mean, I have seen more so in recent years, the FCC impose some pretty hefty fines. Um, when there have been, uh, the rare occasion of, of violations, but I, you know, I think that's one area that I would say, at least in the vast majority of local codes that I'm familiar with and that I've seen others do and that I, you know, I talk to my colleagues around the country all the time about this. Um, most do not put specific regulatory authority on the part of the local government uh, other than perhaps, uh, saying we're not going to grant new permits until you come into compliment, compliance with all your existing uh, permits. Um, and I think that's one of those areas that some community, um, I hope it's not Thurston County, but some community uh, will take action within the gray area of, of what the scope of that enforcement authority is. And eventually somebody in a black robe will tell us what it is. Um, I, I don't think there's a clear answer to that. And and I think there are risks involved if you push too hard there.
So you don't think that, w- w- like in your other examples, clean air or anything like that, if we had somebody that was polluting the air directly and they, they were a permitted operation, but because something went wrong and they started polluting that, uh, pulling their permit would not be within the purview of the permitting agency?
I don't know. I, I really, I really don't know. And and maybe that wasn't a good example. And it gets back to my comment that I'm not an expert in, in that area. I know that, that clean air, or at least I think that clean air standards are either federal or state imposed standards. Local governments don't go county by county or city by city and come up with their own clean air standards, but I don't know if there's anything in the federal or state law that, uh, delegates the ability to enforce violations to the local permitting, uh, entity. Um, it, maybe it's a better analogy is like a Army Corps of Engineer uh, kind of requirement that, uh, the, the corps enforces its, its regulation. So um, I, I, I just don't have a good answer on that because most communities don't push that issue as far as local enforcement and um, again, one, it's rare that somebody will be in violation and and two, then it becomes even rarer that you would see a county or a municipality say, we're shutting you down until you can prove that you're in compliance. It just happens so infrequently. I can't point to an example.
Well, I'm glad to hear that it happens infrequently and I believe you when you say that. Uh, I just, I have real reservations that if there is an issue and the county has no recourse other than to report it to the feds who will take action at some point in the future, but in the meantime, we'll, we would have a, a cell site that is operating outside of limits. The neighbors of that site are, have legitimate complaints there. And if we don't have any recourse other than to wait for somebody in DC to come and do something about it. That, that seems unsatisfactory to me.
I agree with that concern.
That's all I have for now. Thank you.
We have any other questions or comments? Is there anybody willing to make a motion to set the public hearing for June second, two thousand twenty-one for the wireless code?
I'll make the motions at the hearing. I think we should hear from the public.
Second.
So, okay, so it's
Can I have a question? We already have one public hearing for June second. Is there a problem having a second?
I don't believe so. The other public hearing for June second would be on that minor amendment to the capital improvement program. And if we do that one first, I think we'll be in good shape.
Okay. So we have a, a motion to set a public hearing for June second, two thousand twenty-one for the wireless code. All those in favor, say five, say hi.
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 Any opposed?
None.
So it looks like we're having the public hearing on June second.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for showing up. Thanks, Ken, for, for your time.
Thank you. I look forward to seeing you next month.
So I'll kind of leave it up to y'all. What do you guys want to do? We're kind of, you want to jump into the, um, the shoreline stuff or chapter seven, or do we just kind of move it off? You guys still feel energetic?
I think that SMP is one of those kind of things that with thirteen minutes, it would be hard to get through very far. And I know that, um, well, I don't know, Andrew, if you were planning on doing Doug's memo or not, but since Doug's not here, that would be a little difficult as well.
The, the plan was to gather Commissioner comments on, uh, draft chapter nineteen seven hundred, the, the reporting requirements. Um, but I leave it up to the, and then hold the work session on shoreline stabilization when Commissioner Carmen's able to join us since he's a big driver of that. So I will leave it to you all as to whether you wish to proceed tonight or, or postpone.
That should be, that should be pretty quick to do, shouldn't it, Andrew?
It has, the last time we went through it, I don't think there were too many comments, so I, I'm, I'm, I'm here. I'm ready if you guys are.
Jim, I think we should knock that one out if nobody else minds.
I'm good. You guys okay?
Yeah, I think we can get through it quick.
Okay, let's do it.
Great. So, uh, as I mentioned, uh, we'll continue working through the SMP draft in tonight's work session. Tonight we'll look at tra- uh, chapter nineteen seven hundred, which is the special reporting requirement. This chapter is where the detailed reporting requirements are held for any projects that are uh, that, for projects that need a special report, uh, and it's prescribed elsewhere in the SMP. So I did forward you some comments from Commissioner Carmen ahead of tonight's meeting, but it's not for tonight's discussion. I just wanted you to have them uh, put them on the website just in case it did come up and we did discuss it if, if he was here, um, but, but we'll just hold off on that one. Uh, we'll focus on nineteen seven hundred. So specifically, uh, we're looking for any text changes or op- options you would like to have in the draft for, uh, consideration during the public hearing. So I will go ahead and share my screen and pull that chapter up. Okay, so hopefully you are all seeing, uh, and and read, uh, easily chapter nineteen seven hundred. Make it a little bit bigger there. So, uh, I think the best way we should do this is we've been is just to look at section by section. Uh, I'll name it out and you let me know if you have any comments or questions. So anything for, uh, section nineteen seven hundred, one hundred. And if not, uh, nineteen seven hundred, one oh five wetland delineation report. Moving on. Uh, nineteen seven hundred, one ten wetland mitigation plan report. A lot of this has not changed. A lot of this chapter has not changed since you last looked at it. So I'm, I'm pretty sure this was not going to take too super long. Uh, chapter or section rather, nineteen seven hundred, one twelve advanced shoreline mitigation plan. This is a new section, um, that was put in, uh, for the draft that you received back in October that we've been working through. Uh, this was in response to some ecology comments saying if you're going to offer advanced shoreline mitigation and essentially allow someone to do a restoration on a shoreline and then use that um, later on as mitigation, um, for a project that, you know, we should have some more standards on that. And so I have put some things in here. I, I, I adapted this from what I found on the Department of Ecology's website. It's in here for introduction purposes or for conversation purposes, not necessarily where you all will land on it, but it's, uh, this is how it reads today. But if not at this moment, um, I will move on. So section nineteen seven hundred, one fifteen habitat management plan. Nineteen seven hundred, one twenty geotechnical report and geological report. 19700, 120, geotechnical report and geological report. Okay. 700, 19700, 125, hydro geological report. Okay. And 19700, 130, cumulative impacts report. And 19700, 135, navigation study. Or 19700, 140, shoreline mitigation plan. And finally, I believe, 19700, 145, biological habitat surveys. If there are no comments on this chapter, remember you will, you know, get to see it again at the public hearing, after public hearing. So we'll see what sort of comments we get there. At the next work session, I'm planning to have us discuss the shoreline stabilization memo. And then the shoreline appendices, SMP appendices in the draft. So that'll all go out in the email you get ahead of the, the second meeting. But pending any questions, that concludes my work session.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you.
Stick your up, Ms. Jennifer.
The only thing I wanted to share was that you heard a lot during the Buildable Lands presentation tonight about the ongoing agricultural policy project that we have that we've been taking through the agriculture advisory committee. But it'll eventually come your way. And if you're interested in that, we have a webpage that posts a lot of the presentations that we've done to the ag committee through thirstandplanning.org. But I'm also doing a check-in briefing with the board of county commissioners next week on May 13th at 11:30. And you should be able to watch that on their YouTube. If you want to see sort of a brief overview of what this project's all about and get a little preview for yourselves since you're going to start hearing more and more about it. And that's pretty much my only update.
When was that again? Could you give us a quick review on the special meeting and public hearing that we'll be doing on the 20th?
Oh yeah. Hold on. Okay. So please hold. I'm just double checking the time that I just said for the, yes. So community driven review of agriculture policies and programs briefing to the board. I'll be giving that on May 13th at 11:30. So you can tune in or catch it later. All the Youtubes are posted through the board website. On May 20th is your next meeting. So we've asked and the chair has affirmed that May 19th would be a canceled meeting. And May 20th will be a special meeting, which is a public hearing on the Tumwater UGA joint plan.
Thank you. So just as Jennifer just stated, this is on a Thursday. So just keep that in mind. It's going to be the day after our regular meetings. So that day and June 2nd, well, how's the attendance looking? Will be, especially on the 20th, we want to make sure. Well, both days now we have.
Lots of public hearings.
Yeah, we need to make sure that we have a quorum. So everybody looking pretty good for those dates. I am going to put out a little special please slash wine. I'm, I'm hoping that we can show up a little earlier. The kind of the, being here, you know, and not being able to start a meeting at the appropriate time, which were scheduled at 6:30 is kind of, I think disrespectful, not only to the commissioners that show up on time, but also to the public when they're here waiting for us. So I'm just asking that maybe we can kind of, if you're running late, I get it. I know I'm late sometimes, but can we just show up a couple of minutes early to make sure that we are being respectful for all that are coming to our meetings? That's it. Bang, poor Jer. Thanks guys. Especially you, Eric.